Use it, radio, I have to sing.
Not gonna sing. But as a small token of our esteemed appreciation for the heroic deeds of Wanda, I would like to, as mayor, present her golden key to the city of Profton.
You look good with that, Wanda.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to thank everybody that made this possible for me and to everyone that is attending. Profton is a great city to live in and it's full of wonderful people. The reason, I guess we're all here is about fire. And the good Lord does things in mysterious ways. He put me at the right place at the right time. And therefore, we still have a city auditorium. As you all know, I'm the quiet one. Over there is the talk.
Inducted in the National Coaching Hall of Fame, key to the city. I don't know what I can do to keep up with these. There's a painting in Congress for everyone. Please enjoy that. And like I said, thank you very much.
And it is be cap, so please have some coffee. There's water.
I want to point out the fact that the open meeting law focus is there for everybody to take a look at that. With that, we'll have to pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the revolution which stands for a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, with that, we'll need a motion to go into the public hearing, open public hearing.
Can we make a motion to go on public hearing?
Motion's been made and seconded. Fights?
Yes.
Warberne?
Yes.
Okay, as is clearly states, this is a chance for public comment, so we want to hear what the public has to say about the potential sale of the property that the city has available. So anybody like to comment here? More than welcome to step up there. I don't have a microphone or a reach, but we'll see what we can do to comment.
Comment about what? About the ground that's for sale?
Yeah.
The only thing I was curious about is the 25 acres that's for sale. If the person just wanted to buy like three or four acres of it, if he could put a bid on like something like that?
I don't know that we're just not accepting any bid, right? So we need bid a portion of it, part of it, and something that the council would have to consider. So yeah, I'm sure we'd accept a bid and then we'd have to figure out if somebody had bid the whole part of it, but that's up to the council what they want to do at that point. But I wouldn't think, I wouldn't hesitate to not put a bid in, to put a bid in on if you want a part of it.
I could tell you some stories.
Anyone else?
What is the reasoning for selling it?
The reason I think we need to sell it is...
Can you please talk louder?
Pardon?
Can you talk louder, please?
Pardon? I'm sorry. The reason that I, as a councilman, might delay to see it sold because I don't think we're going to ever develop it. We've had, I don't know, maybe 12, 15 years maybe approximately. I don't know exactly when it was bought. And we're not getting, to put the town to put streets and sewer and water in there. I just don't think it's going to pan out because you might have one house that went back there. I think we can use the money to help our city out. I just don't think that a lot of us will never probably see it developed unless you guys know something I don't to many people in the town. I've never seen too much interest at all unless you guys have seen or heard or and if you have heard somebody, they need to come forward to the council. I've never heard anybody that would be interested to. I remember when, before Jerry Stefan bought that place out there. It was Jim Hanson had it. He built those commercial dryers, if I'm wrong. Commercial dryers for these grain vans and he had it, he had it going pretty good for a while and then all of a sudden it just died out. Nothing ever came back. So I just can't see us holding on to that. And we could use that money to help our talent. So that's, that's my reason. I don't know what the other councilmen. I've lived here all my life. I don't know what these other ones.
When I was on planning and zoning, we had this conversation a couple of times where the city is not a developer. We need a developer to come in and develop the property. The city just doesn't do that. You know, we're not experts in that area. So it's open now to be purchased by a developer. And maybe Mike can speak to this too. How we need a developer to come in and if someone wants to develop the north side acres. But the city, you know, hasn't done that before. Is it talking about doing that? And then like Larry said, there's other clients, there's a lot of other projects that we have going on that are very expensive. So then we need that money to go to other things.
And to add to, Councilman Miller says that a developer buys it. Developer puts the streets in, the developer puts the sewer and water lines in, weather coordinates is across and then we send. So it ain't the city putting roads and sewer and water. It's whoever buys it, that he wants to develop it. He's the one that does all that with the directions of our city codes.
That's perfectly said. It is, that's a great idea for a developer to come in. But nothing against farmers. If a farmer buys it, then it's never available.
Well, we would love to hear suggestions. If you have ideas or thoughts about selling the property, please, sure. How do you feel about that? Do you think that selling the property?
Yes, that's like I said, if you sell it to a developer, awesome, because then it gets developed. But you sell it to somebody that's been a farmer, that might not ever happen again.
Well, the public, so his decision is just about, should we put it for sale or not?
We got to put it up to bids for anybody that wants to do it. We can't just say, sorry, bikes is a developer. He's going to get this property. It's got to be a fair impartial bid from anybody that wants to take it upon themselves and do whatever they want. We can't just single out developers and so, you know, if some farmer wants to take it, that's, he's got to have a bid in there. So it comes out to be fair, equal to everybody instead of just certain people that are, can do it.
And it's true, we're kind of laying a lot going different directions. But the bottom line, for prosperity, as a city collectively, we've not been able to generate the resources to develop. It's just not in the cards right now with all the grant applications that we have and things. It's just not in there. But I mean, our biggest thing is, however it goes, it's going to generate tax revenue. If it's 30 new homes out there and families in our community and our community grows. If it's agriculture and somebody raises good crops there and makes money off of it, we can, our city can grow because of it. We have a tax base, however it is, you know, so that's why we're impartial to this thing, like you said. But I just want to see prosperity and that, that's, that's a place to grow. That is a place to grow. And we look around and is told by multiple farmers there, and it's true, we aren't making any more land. And so if somebody is excited or wants to take on that venture to do it, we encourage developers. We'll do everything humanly possible as a city to help them.
And if a farmer takes it and somebody in town wants to bring a business his, I'm sure the farmer in his ugly eye can probably come some kind of means of taking so many acres off of whatever he wants. It's a possibility. I don't know.
Is the sewer going to run underneath that property? Does it stay in the ditch?
The what?
The lagoon to sewer to the...
No, the new lagoon that we're getting? No. Is that what you're asking me?
Is that, you know, it's kind of diagonal line to the Gunther property for the lagoon, I just wonder, but this...
The route for the lagoon, for the sewer pipe?
Route from lagoon is going to start where the sewer plant is right now. It's going to go on the east side Randy Austin Morris property till we hit the ball field. And we're going Randy Phillips's pasture outside the fence of the ball field. Follow that fence line and going back to the west of Randy Phillips's property and then go straight north till we hit the right way of road of Jim Murphy and I think Brian Weebas got that property. It's going to be in the road ditch. Going to follow the road ditch all the way out to where Dave Shoemaker used to live on a Melvin Stewart place. A few people know where that is. And it's going to go in the middle of the road because we have real water on one side and we have a main water line on the other side of the road. We're going down the middle of the road till it hits past the asphalt and go down in the ditch on the west side and follow that ditch all the way around past Jeanie Langmires and then go west to all the road ditches. No waste property. It's going to be in a right away till we hit the 121 and I don't know what road that is across from Donnie Gunther. Go underneath that road to the north, follow it on the east side of 121. It's going to get out there maybe by, well, I don't know exactly where, but it's going to be out there by Chad Gunther. Go underneath Highway 121 and cut the field across of Dwayne Gunther's and get into where Dale Gunther's got the property. Used to be the Yoke Allen Foxhole. That's, that's the route. And we got underneath 121, we have permits and we're okay. They're going to put it in a big sleeve so our line is in a sleeve and it just don't lay in dirt. So if there's ever break, it stays in that sleeve and it don't contaminate nothing. And it's going to have one lift station. I don't know exactly where that lift station is to get it all the way out there to the, to the possible lagoons. There's going to be four lagoons out there stepping them down. And that's, that's where it is at this point. But that is the route they're going to take. And I just got to get easements from Dwayne Gunther, Randy Phillips, and Randy Austin Morris. The rest of it's all in the right way of the road. So that north side acres don't have nothing to do with the new lagoon that's going to put in. And that sounds to me like the way I talked to Mr. Miller. The money's going to be available probably in October of this year and then they're going to send out for bids. All this remaining is done. It's just now we're waiting for the money to be released from the government. And then once that's released, he can send out for bids and hopefully next spring or next year we'll get started. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay. If not, we need a motion to close the public hearing and resume the regular meeting?
I made a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Warberne?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Pikes?
Yes.
Okay. So was that to close and open or do we need to resume for a court hearing?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, fantastic. So the first item of business is to approve the minutes from the January 16th, 2024 meeting?
There is a correction in them. It's a corrective minutes. Where we have the sale of property, I had listed two properties and it's three. So I just corrected that. I need a motion for corrected minutes.
I'll make a motion for quick minutes for the January 16th.
Motion's been made and seconded. Miller?
Yes.
Fights?
Yes.
And Warberne? Okay, the next item on is to approve the claims for February?
On the motion to approve the claims for February?
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the federal claims. Fights?
Yes.
Warberne?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. We have public comment? All right. So we'll open for public comment at this point in time. If, has any other public that would like to address the council? If not, thank you and we'll be moving on. New business is Walker is here with Nebraska Public Agency Investment Trust. Walker, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Quite the attendance for, you say this is pretty good. A good, a lot of city council meetings is pretty good attendance.
They just knew you were coming, that's all. And a cake?
Yeah. I checked when I got in here because it was actually a council meeting because cake isn't generally known. So my name is Walker Zawcowski. I'm with PMA Financial and I'm here to talk to you about INPAID, or also known as the Nebraska Public Agency Investment Trust.
Check, check.
You know the nerves, Mike, now I'm like, feel like I'm going to be karaoke.
We got Don looking back. That's the best I can do here.
You can do that up close.
I'll just stand right here. I'll address everybody. So I'm here to talk to you about the Nebraska Public Agency Investment Trust, which is a mouthful. Chantella reached out to me. We do quite a bit of work with your county treasurer, Lori. But INPAID, it's a, basically it's a money market fund. It's been around for almost 30 years. It's a statewide board that oversees the fund and it was created under Nebraska statutes like 30 years ago. So I work for PMA Financial. We're hired by the INPAID board to service the fund. So we're just a service provider. PMA, we serve as the marketing agent, the investment advisor and the administrator for the fund. But then the board also hires some others too. There's a custodian bank. It's U and B in Omaha. And then we have an attorney with Scline Williams in Lincoln. And then we have an auditor too. So at the end of the day, if you ever remember anything, INPAID, it's just a money market fund only for public entities in Nebraska. And we work with, well, originally it was started by the NRDs, the NREA and NACO, the county officials. But it's grown significantly since then. So we work with hospitals, cities, villages, schools, irrigation districts, power districts, pretty much anything that's in the pile of tax dollars. And that's the whole point of what the fund is, is dealing with public entities. Safety is the number one component of it. Liquidity, so you always have access to your cash. And then the third part's yield. And you want to make some money on your reserves, your public dollars, but safety and liquidity are the two most important components to it. And then yield obviously kind of comes in there. And that's truly why INPAID was created, was that on your own, it's tough to sometimes find what the best investment is or if you're making the best decision. By being part of this investment pool, you're pooling your funds together with hundreds of other public entities and hundreds of other millions of dollars around the state. And then you share your economies of scale. So you're only paying for one audit, you're only paying for one attorney and you share those economies. And as the fund grows, the yield goes up and the costs around it goes down. So the rate today is 5.35 percent. That's just your daily rate. There's no obligation to keep your funds in there. You need access to them today. You put in an ACH, they land in your business bank the next business day. All right. Questions are thrown on at you so far.
So how big an investment group are we talking? Is there multi-million dollars or how many cities or what are we looking at?
The total of the fund. The fund is probably, well, it's getting close to a billion dollars in total. And there could be, we have clients that have maybe $20,000 in there and there's clients that have a couple hundred million dollars in there. So that's what the point of it. You share the benefit of those economies by all pooling together. So there's no minimums, no maximums. You're not required to use the fund. It's just according to state law, you have to pass a resolution to say we want to be a participant in it and then we can open the account. And then you can use it, not use it, you don't charge any fees or you're not required to have any funds in there. But you're talking like you have a project coming down the road. You know, we do with that stuff all the time where you have the cash come in and you're like, let's segregate it so we know where it's sitting and you can track the interest separately and be ready to go when that project starts. Do you know how long that project's going to last? We can help you kind of time investments even outside of the fund to say, okay, maybe it makes sense to pull a CD at a certain time limit at this guaranteed rate so you know how much money you're going to make while you're waiting for that project to last. We do a lot of client, like bond proceeds management where if you're building a highway or a school or something, you know exactly how long it's going to take and you'll get all the bond money upfront. We can help manage the arbitrage and track the reporting for the IRS and make sure that, well, not make sure, but try to offset all the costs that you would incur for borrowing it and kind of retain those, those funds. That's, one of my jobs is, I mean, obviously marketing the fund and being out here talking to all of you, but I am a Series 7 registered rep. I am a Series 15, a school advisor. So our fiduciary duty is to you and your project. So it can tell you whether it makes the most sense to even use INPAID at that point. If you have a project that comes in, it may make more sense to be in a money market, you know, at your bank or in CDs at your local bank, or it's a combination of a few different things. We want to make sure you just, with each project, it would maximize, you know, what's the best interest to you. But those are all other services and I don't want to get too over into the weeds, but a lot of other services you get just by having access to INPAID, that bond proceeds management's on. We do a ton of cash flow analysis as well. So you probably, you'll have history of what your balances look like as a, as a city and what are your highs, what are your lows, you know, obviously what are funds coming in? When are they going out? And then historically, what is that low balance? Well, then it says, well, maybe you're maximizing the return on those low balances too. That's just all services that we do as managing fund. It doesn't cost you anything. It's just, that's what, that's why we're hired to run it is because they're required to do that for you.
I got a couple of questions. And I know the money market is not a sure thing. Now, what have you seen? And we've seen crashes before, you know, and I'm a conservative man. I don't put this neck out any further than I want to chuck it off. So let's, let's just use some hypothetical numbers. Let's say we get $500,000. And there's no guarantees that, you know, if things go sour, we're just going to have money. Is that, how, how's that work?
Right. So number one I got to say is INPAID technically is an investment. Could you lose money? Yes. Have we ever? No. And when we go to that part of it too, you get on a very key point. So being an investment, I mean, with public dollars or even with a bank, anything over $250,000 is technically FDIC insured. So that's where you have to follow collateralizing those funds so that your dollar is safe. I should have started with this too. So we have to follow as an investment advisor to the INPAID fund, we follow state statutes. And those are laid out or what are investments that can back or collateralize that fund? So even if you're on your own, if you pull $1 million CD to a bank, anything over $250,000 needs to be collateralized in some other way, whether it would be in this single bank pool collateral program or you have treasuries or agencies or some type of collateral or a certificate that says if something would happen, your money is still safe. So that's where we follow state laws to follow that. I can give you a long answer to this because this is a very important question. One, we do stress tests on the fund, the bulk of the fund, all the time. We drew what happened over the last two years when rates went to zero. Nobody lost any money. So there's proof in the pudding that, you know, things can go really, really bad. It runs out in a hurry and the fund's back to 5.35 percent and no one's lost any money. But we do stress tests on the fund. So right now, there's a lot of stuff going on too. If the Fed raises something, we're kind of on a bubble right now and so things could change quickly. But we think of, okay, so what if the Fed, instead of dropping it 25 basis points, what if they drop 150 basis points? What happens to the fund? What happens if they decide to increase what that borrowing rate is? So we're always saying, putting that stress on the fund to say, what would happen? Is the, you know, is it still a one-to-one asset value of $100 being backed by a dollar? And then we look at what happens if a large amount of money came out of the fund? What if a large amount of money comes into the fund? Those are all scenarios that we're running all the time. So we can kind of get an idea and the board sees all those stress tests. So as a fund, we're making sure that, you know, your dollar in there is always worth a dollar.
So let's say we agree to put some money with your outfit. And are we going to be contacted with somebody that's going to watch our money for us a little bit? Or we have to do it ourselves? I mean, do we have to monitor ourselves? I mean, how, how does this, how does this work with your company? I mean, let's say I used too much money right first, 500,000, 250,000, but a bank covers. And you guys are saying that you're going to go and follow the same standards as they do?
It's not the same as a bank, no, but anything over that 250, there's Nebraska law that says how funds need to be collateralized. And that's going to be what those securities that back the entire fund. Whether, think of it more of like, it's just an online bank account, like a high-yield savings account. So you just, you're just going to look at what that balance is. I'm just explaining to you, everything else, it's one online.
Can we get a report for your company saying how we're doing?
Yeah.
A month or six months or yearly or?
Yeah, so it's a daily rate. So the day, it's a daily rate and it's paid monthly. There is money daily, paid monthly. And just like a bank account, you log in, pull your statement.
And it'll tell us up to date and what the, what's your graphic showing where we're headed?
Well, we can't predict where we're headed, but yeah.
From, from last month to this month, will we raise it lower or whatever?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So the thing that's different than be like a savings account, it would be more, our job is to make sure that it's a one-to-one asset ratio, right? So your dollar in is backed by a dollar and then our job is to use those dollars to make dividends and make interest. So your dollar in there, like you put $250,000 in INPAID, we're going to show you balance there. But at the end of the month, it's going to be a dividend. I mean, because you're a participant in the fund. That's what your, that's what your interest is. So you'll, you'll, yeah, just think of it, look at those back statements. It's going to show your principal, it's going to show your interest.
So I know you guys ain't doing this for nothing. So how do we, do you pay a monthly fee to your service or how do you do that?
Good question. No, we're, the 5.35 percent rate, that's net after a cost to run the fund.
So that, that's what we get after. You guys pay on your stuff.
So us as service providers, the board sets how much we are paid. And that's just, everything that takes to run the fund is taken out and then the 5.35 is net rate. So you won't, there's no, you won't see any fees. There is a cost to run it, obviously. But our job is to do that efficiently, but then still make it a high-yielding fund or else no one would use it. We can't pay ourselves more and then not pay enough for you and then no one uses it and there's no funds. So it has to be a competitive yield.
So what's, what's, I mean, let's go back to 250,000. If for some reason we needed extra money, do we, is there a minimum that we have to leave in there? Or we can take it out and zero start over if we have some more kind of things like that? So we're not, we're not locked to having that much money in all the time?
No penalty?
No.
So like, so basically you're using the 250,000 and buying what, mutual funds? Is that what you're doing?
So collateralized investments, according to state law, it's, no, not mutual funds. Some money markets, which would be classified as mutual funds, but money markets are safer than that. A lot of treasury, US treasuries and agencies, it's all on the debt side, right? It says debt is, is safer than what equities are. So it's going to be like US debt, treasuries, agencies, bank CDs. We can only work with Nebraska banks, which is also in state law. So we work with Nebraska banks and essentially do bulk CDs with them, rest DA agreements with them. There is a little bit of commercial paper, which would be a corporate obligation, but that's only a small portion of the fund. Not near what's allowed in state statutes just because we want it to be safer. And then there's some like overnight repo. What that is, it's kind of like an overnight money market fund for banks where they need to borrow back and forth so they can meet their cash minimums every night. All super safe investments. Nebraska's laws are way more conservative than any of the other states that we work in.
So this normally pays better than putting in a CD?
Well, it's a daily rate. Right now, this is, you're going to get a tricky, tricky answer to that. Right now, it is paying better because daily rate, because it's already an inverted yield curve. So short-term rates are higher than what long-term rates are. So short-term like money market INPAID fund is 5.35, whereas we're seeing like one-year CDs at like 5.15 or 4.95. And so essentially saying that the market's going to come down a little bit. So banks are paying or CDs are paying a little bit less because they think that by the time that the fund's matured in a year, short-term rates will be lower. So yes and no, I guess, is the answer to that.
Do we have any choice of that or, I mean, I have some money and I have a whole sheet of where I could put it. Who decides where we're going to stick our money? Is that your company telling us the best place to put the money? Or how's that work? I mean, everybody should have a choice. I mean, they're talking to a city. I mean, they're talking to a city, not just a individual. How do you determine where the money gets divided and what's gonna do our best?
Everyone gets the same rate. It's all, it's a bulk, right? So if there's, call it five hundred million dollars in there, the whole entire thing's collateralized together.
So which, which, you know, you have to buy stock someplace?
No stock, we can't buy stock. Yep, no. It's basically large issues of, of debt. So when the treasury issues debt, we'd be a part of that or if it turns over, we'd be a part of that. It's, the whole point of the fund is that you get access to, like, we can buy those larger blocks of securities at a cheaper rate than you would individually and that's where you get that kind of economies of scale or the chance of a better rate. Individually though, like, we're not gonna place individual investments. That's not, that's not what we do. Unless you wanted us to help broker like a CD, I mean, you can call us. We do fixed term rates all the time for clients where they'll say, hey, we had a CD mature, you know, a hundred thousand bucks or a million bucks. We want rates for one year. We work with our bank network. We can look at what it costs for a treasury and an agency and provide you that rate. If it's something you wanna go with, we can place it for you. Or you can go to your local bank and just say, hey, I got rates here, can you match this? And they say yes, then we tell you to go with that, whatever the highest rate was. But I wouldn't get too into the weeds of like, we're not like, we're not like your individual investment advisor. We're gonna tell you like, here's exactly what your portfolio needs to look like. It's just a money market fund. I'm just telling you the safe way behind the scenes that we follow the laws and make sure that the entire fund's backed and safe. You guys excited for finance class out here? Gosh, I feel like I needed some finance jokes. I have a ten-year-old and a seven-year-old, so I really only, the only jokes I have are ten-year-olds. And they're not politically correct right now, so I'm gonna throw them out there.
Yeah, any questions? Well, we'll definitely talk about it, take into consideration, I don't know if we. How do we, like you said, it takes us.
A resolution.
A resolution.
Yeah, the resolution is in front of me. And seriously, no pressure. I'm not here to try to cap, like, capture your money, right? Sean Kelly reached out to me, asked me questions and just telling me the services. And the fund's been around for thirty years. My job is just to make sure that I come to meetings and answer any of your questions. Like, we're not money hungry, right? We're not, I don't know, in order to get your cash. If you wanna use it, you have to pass a resolution. We get audited on that stuff at the federal level. They make sure that before we open an account for anybody, we had everything in order. So you pass the resolution, we fill up the account, whether you have money in there or don't, that's up to you.
So we didn't close the doors by then, we're just opening the doors. With potential to do three dollars or three, million dollars for the sake of whatever.
Yeah, and it wasn't created to cannibalize local bank relationships either. It's just another tool in your toolbox. Sometimes, which we saw a lot when banks product was, you know, when all rates were zero percent, banks didn't really want cash and so people were looking to place the market. Sometimes you might have a project that comes in, you know, a natural disaster, so you give three, four million bucks. Where do you need to put that? That's what we do, we collateralize it or keep it safe. So it's just a tool for you not, not, not try to take all of your money away, right? We're just one, one other player in the sandbox.
Talk a lot more about the resolution.
Can you tell me how it works like with the banks? And I know if you don't wanna answer these questions, we're, we might look. The banks, they have to pay insurance to collateralize, or how does that work? Like, our bank now, we have the money, we have money in there and they pay extra because it's above two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So how will that hurt our bank if we move the money into this account?
I don't wanna speak for your bank. That's, yeah, I would say that's kind of why we're separate. Banks make money a lot. I mean, they make money their own way. This is kind of why the fund was created, right? Was just thirty years ago when they said, we wanna know if we have access to, how can we make more money? And that's where they created a pool of public entities. That's where there's all these state laws about how you can keep it safe and how you can keep it liquid. Banks, they operate differently, right? They're, they're for profits. I am understanding quite the same thing that you did about reading the news about FDIC insurance going up because of the bank failures. That's about all I can really, I can really say. It's not my wheelhouse, I'm the, I'm the other side of the house. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Thank you for your presentation. I think this is great. My only thought is I would like to talk to our bank more about it. I have talked to them once. I would like to talk to them again before we make a decision, but I mean, it sounds great otherwise.
Oh, we're educated now. Thank you very much.
More educated than we were.
And others to talk to, and there's several other communities in the area, your county treasurer. We do, that's how you guys collect your, receive your county taxes is through us. It comes from in paid, we collect them from, everything's HCH from Lori to you. So she, your person, if you have more questions about it, she'd love to answer them, so.
So if we have some money in there for a little while and then say we have zero for a year, or how, how would that work?
That's up to you.
It's fine.
Yeah. I mean, like when I was talking earlier about like the stress test, like, we, we plan for all that stuff of funds, when they're incoming, when they're gonna go out. I mean, it's a really large fund. It's mostly to where if we have a super large city or somewhere that is gonna pull out like a hundred million dollars, we wanna be aware of that just to make sure that the fund's gonna be ready for it. But most of the time, we're in top of a million dollars or less and those are going in and out every day. And we just know that's gonna happen. So we don't need to know the laws or anything, we're just act appropriately.
So are we gonna be assigned a, I don't know, I'll just call them agents or somebody that we contact? Or I mean, is there somebody that we can, is it you?
It's me or Jake. So yeah, Jake is the bar right-hand man, he'd be technically your portfolio advisor. Lori from Knox County loves him. She actually said, he's in our Naperville, Illinois office. And she actually sent him cookies the other day, he does so much for her, so you'll like Jake.
A lot of investors, you know, they come and they tell you it's gonna be great and then all of a sudden they'll call them and, well, they don't work here anymore and we're gone. Maybe you just sit out and pay yourself.
He, he sounds like Jake, looks like Jake. Uh, Jake's been PMA for, actually longer than I have been. But also he was out today and so his emails are going to Tom and Tom knows all the Nebraska clients too because they all tell him for each other, so.
We'll definitely talk about it in a month.
Sounds really good.
Thank you. Really appreciate your time.
Yeah, maybe you should, let me be up there.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Make sure your questions. Jason Walker.
J B, nice to meet you.
Sorry to make such a public disappearance, but I'm gonna do that, that's alright.
Well, it's fine.
I don't blame you.
Cake for the road.
Take cake, drink the water bottle.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, uh, the next item of business, uh, new business would be the street, uh, speedway signs. And we have notice from the state of Nebraska Department of Roads that, uh, it says, at this time, there's no planned changes in the speedways. Not making any changes in existence speedways. So basically it says that we're gonna keep things exactly how they are, even though it would be really nice to slow down traffic out there by the school, but the Department of Nebraska Department of Roads says this is the way it's gonna be. I don't know if we have an.
Do we have to put some more signs along money right there? Money right there across next down by the payday mark. And I don't see no way past the school.
I didn't read that notice.
Fifty-five all the way from Calther down to I- twelve.
Oh, you want to add additional signage? That's not part of this, the state requires, right?
Street signs.
Yeah, okay.
It's different?
Well, uh, it, while we're talking about street signs, if you wanna have.
No, that's fine.
No, that's fine. I don't know the number, location, if something we wanna change, we definitely can.
That's not a mistake of the state. We're gonna add more signs, streets on the state highways.
That's right. Questions about that? Okay, the next item, new business.
This requires a ordinance.
Okay, alright.
And I need a, um, it's ordinance number two, twelve, twenty-four and I'll need a motion to waive the three readings of it.
So this is to change the speed limits, we're not changing?
No, we're not changing anything. Just every, we have to update these so often and it requires an ordinance to do it. And I'll read the ordinance to you if I get a motion that we're going to waive the three readings of it and I'll read it to you.
I'll make a motion to waive the three readings of the one.
Sorry. Motion's been made, second, to waive the three reading ordinance. Hides?
Yes.
Overnate?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes. Ordinance number two, twelve, twenty-four. An ordinance adopting and establishing a reduced speed zone on state highways within the incorporated area of the city of Crofton, Knox County, Nebraska. Be it ordained by the chairman and the city council of the city of Crofton, Knox County, Nebraska. One, no person shall drive a vehicle on a highway at a speed greater than is reasonable and prudent under conditions and having regard to the actual and potential hazards from existing. Any person shall drive at a safe and appropriate speed when approaching and crossing an intersection or railroad grade crossing, when approaching and going around a curb, when approaching a hill crest, when traveling upon any narrow or winding roadway and when special hazards exist with respect to pedestrians or other traffic or by reason of weather or highway conditions. Two, except when a special hazard exists that requires lower speeds for compliance with subsection one of this ordinance, no person shall drive a vehicle on the state highway North Twelve within the corporate limits of the city from the west corporate limits, five hundred and thirty feet west of the junction within one twenty-one to the east corporate limits, East Second Street, in excess of thirty-five miles per hour. No person shall drive a vehicle on the state highway in one twenty-one within the corporate limits of the city from the junction within Twelve to the north corporate, corporate limits at Iowa Street in excess of fifty-five miles per hour. Three, the maximum speed limit set forth in this section may be altered as set forth in section thirty-nine dash six-six-three or section thirty-nine dash six-six-six Nebraska revised statutes reissue nineteen forty-three. Four, the department of transportation and local authorities may erect and maintain suitable signs along highways under their respective jurisdictions in such number and at such locations as they shall deem necessary to give adequate notice of the speed limit upon such highways. Five, for purpose of this ordinance, vehicles shall mean every device in, upon or by which any person or property is or may be transported or drawn upon a highway, excepting devices moved by human power or used exclusively upon stationary rails or tracks. Six, any person violating any provision of the several articles of this ordinance for which penalty is not otherwise provided for under the laws of the state of Nebraska or the prior ordinances of the city of Crofton shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction thereof shall be fined in any sum not exceeding one hundred dollars. Seven, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Eight, this ordinance shall be enforced and take effect from and after its passage, approval and publication. Passed and approved this twelfth day of February twenty twenty-four.
Motion two, Chris.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I can say. Motion made, second. Jason?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Hides?
Yes.
Okay, next item of business is the swimming pool update and projection for the summer. The projection for the summer is we will be living, as far as I know, with our disco pool. There's no way that the resources they are that we're gonna be able to rip out of the pool this summer and have it ready by next year. I don't think that that's, that funding is available to do that, from what we see.
Until September twenty twenty-five, spend that money on the pool.
It's not September twenty-four?
I talked to Irma, is she here yet? Talked to Irma just before the meeting and she said it's September of twenty twenty-five. So it's a year from September. And that'll give us some time to get our, everything in order, okay? And we need to probably continue progress and forward on some of this stuff too. I know the bank is, you know, waiting for us to come up with some money. And J O or whoever, you're, you're definitely set, right?
Yes.
Jake, is that all, going pretty good with that?
Yeah, they're just waiting on us.
Yeah.
First, we need to make a motion or we need to enter into a new contract with them because our contract with J O has expired. And so.
Specifically with the rural or for the city in general?
I don't.
City, we have, we have J O.
Right, we, I think we, yeah, okay.
It says city council review and approve and trainee to agree with J O. I'm not sure if that's for the pool or. The whole, but I can find out tomorrow. Andrew's great about.
Andrew is also a gentleman that estimated that pool house is six hundred thousand dollars of material. What's the bill's about?
I don't, he said the material cost for the bath house alone will likely be over six hundred thousand. That seems like a lot for a pool house.
It does.
But I think we can either tell him our budget for the pool house and then he will look at that or we can say they're not gonna have him, do a plan for others. So that was, that's up to us. Yeah, they're just waiting on us. Um, we do need to decide whether we.
So do you intend just to redo the contract with J O for the pool? To keep them as engineers for the pool and give them what we develop for them? I don't know the cost of it. Yeah. The motion. Motion made, second. Miller?
Yes.
Hides?
Yes.
Okay.
That actually, I just needed to know if we, that's a regular permit we get every year. I just needed to know if I was gonna get it again or if the pool was gonna be closed. So I was in there and it was forty dollars. We get that year. Yep, everybody, everybody who owns a pool has to have that. No, no, I just needed to know if you wanted.
So are we gonna have, I need to get the direction of whether the contract will include that house or just be the pool? Which, would it be better if I told them our budget for the bath house?
Which is, what is our actual sustainable budget for the pool?
Should I ask him what kind of house we can get for it?
You can, they, you can ask. I mean, the door, that's fair to ask, right? Develop plans in the canyon for something for a hundred thousand dollar bathroom. Because of the, the new pool comes with the new mechanical parts are there. We just need to deploy the bathroom. Right, yep. But the bath house does all the mechanical parts.
Correct.
So what do they charge us for our contract for the three day, the price to get? So what do they charge us for our contract for the three that, the price to get some of that for the bathhouses? Are we breathing in there?
Their design part of the bathhouse. So do we want them to design a bathhouse for us, knowing that the estimated cost they have is?
Six hundred thousand.
Unless we ask them for a lower number.
If they, if they can design it, but we're not saying we're gonna have to open it.
Oh, we're gonna pay them to design it, if that's what you wanna do.
We gotta have something for a stadium rather than have a, a bathroom, not gonna put a curb or something on the bathhouse.
Mill would like to propose to them, that if, we'll let you design this and we can design it with some kind of like constraint, some limit that we can afford to do it, that problem. So what's that number? What's logical in designing a bathhouse?
The other thing is, if we say, let's have a one hundred thousand dollar budget, I don't know Larry. It sounds like maybe you can talk to people in the community who are willing to volunteer or make donations. Then maybe that amount would go down. And they wanna see that we have the money to cover whatever we're.
Do you not have issue, you might have to see if there's potentially a way to build a bathhouse. For a hundred thousand dollars, if that's possible. Hey, that's a few, but.
At six hundred thousand, is that what they had for a bathhouse?
Or one hundred thousand.
And that wrapped the total amount to one twenty-eight. But if we wait here, then that cost is going to go up ten percent.
And we have to have a designer design bathhouse, I can't design it.
I can't.
We can't, we have to have a designer design, and the community can find.
So my next question is about the grants, like this potential of a one hundred thousand dollar this one piece that we had. J O gave us some suggestions of this as we, our tactic of it.
Yes, definitely, definitely, right. Can we make a decision what you wanna do with the pool? And then we'll, we'll talk about that grant writer. Let's see, you, you. I don't think that, they can, six hundred thousand dollars. A hundred thousand dollar materials. Keep in mind, all the mechanicals are, are part of the pool.
It's more than a.
Yeah, so it's a totally part of the pool, so it's, it's a structure, not just a structure, but it is a structure. So, yeah.
And if, and all the fixtures. I thought, uh, gears and all that, so that's going with the pool, because the pool's gonna have that there. So a hundred thousand, I think, would be.
So the pool's got a separate building for the machines to be in?
The machines are going to be in the bathhouse.
Yep, they're part of that equipment. So we need a motion to that, to page J O to be the engineer, to see if they can design a hundred thousand dollar pool house.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's made, second. Pikes?
Yes.
Overnitt?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, the next item of new business is the survey of the community. And I believe that I have, we have, a survey at our house. It's a fairly simple thing, I don't know if everybody got it, in town, did everybody have a survey? And it's simple, just say, uh, above or below. I don't know what percentage of people did or what. We had, and I don't know exactly how, we went through this process where a certain percentage of people in town all tied up in legalities and cross some Ts and dot an I, stuff like that. This was supposed to happen a long time ago, as you know, it came out in paper there was gonna be a survey. Nobody got surveyed, because they didn't know what percentage of town had to get a survey. And we couldn't get the answers to figure out, so we did that in vain, right? And so now, now there are surveys out there where.
It's from N E N N D?
Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District.
N E N E D D.
Right, but that's what it is.
No, I got mine in.
And I don't know, I don't know what percentage are, but the goal hopefully is that, um, before through the survey, is we have and, and the facts are the facts, well, the people that they surveyed had too many people above the threshold. And so now we're resurveying, hoping to get a better data analysis. Potentially, we have enough people below that, so that makes us infinitely, um, available for more grants and largest loans. But we're not false supply documentation, we're just pulling a different group of people, and I think it's random. But we're just gonna see if we can make something happen.
So not everybody in town is getting it.
I don't think that everybody in town's getting it.
But everybody that gets the survey needs to.
Absolutely, needs to.
Yeah, that's bothering me, Jamie. Some people asked me, this survey gonna be with this new school, and they're getting, they're getting confused thinking that the survey is for the the election coming up on March twelfth, I think.
There's no connection.
No connection, it's, it's for a grant for our city, right? These are supposed to be equivalent to what we can get for grants.
Yeah, it makes us eligible. In order for, apply for certain grants, you have to have a certain level of income above or below that magical number.
Is, is, let's say we had six hundred people in Crofton, which we probably, out of that six hundred, is it twenty percent that get it? Is there a percentage that they put out, or we don't know that?
We don't know what percentage. I don't even think they know for sure what percentage they set down. It's.
They're all set out though, they're not.
As far as I know, the people that are going to get a survey have a survey. And they need to turn it back.
So we need to either urge people to do it, because that'll reflect on the grants that we could get for our, our city of Crofton.
Right, yep.
But it's not for any grant in particular, it's just for any grant, all grants.
Overall grants that we could get.
Yeah. It's kinda like, I guess this might be, for example, it's free and reduced lunches at school. I mean, the more people that you have qualified for free and reduced lunches at school, makes your school in a better situation financially. And so this gives us more opportunities. So please, please, fill it out, um, like wherever you're at, above or below, it doesn't make a, I mean, it's hopefully, you know, it's confidential. You know, nobody else will see it, and you can fill it out and send it back in, but it does have merit. It really does have merit for our city itself. And I guess the bottom line is if everybody's above, then, then we have a lot of resources, and we don't need order of a grant or anything like that. Okay, any other questions about that? Yep?
I'm still confused on how you determine who gets that and how it's accurate if not everybody gets the survey for our community, because it could just randomly draw a bunch of people that are above the threshold, like you said. Which I'm assuming that above the threshold is people that made more and who qualify for a grant, so how, how is that? How, how do they determine that?
Uh, it's a.
Not really accurate then.
It's a, it's an agency that does this, we asked them to do this for us. They dealt with the government, the state of Nebraska, to figure out what the percentage was, and that initial thing never happened. We couldn't get a response for them. And, and Mrs. Potts, can I call you?
Nancy.
Nancy Potts, we're diligent with them, and then they finally said, well, we don't know, so we can't send out the surveys, because we don't have any clue. Well, evidently, they, now they have a clue, they didn't clue me on what that percentage is, I don't know. They never said to us, as a city, as, did you send to you? This says what percentage, I have no idea. They did not say, hey, Bob Evans circled seventeen places or twenty-seven, or a hundred and seven places that you want to send to. It's just a random thing that they pulled out, and I don't have any idea of how, what we can do to control that. My hope is that we get a lot of blow, but I have no idea, I don't know. I don't know how they determine that. And Nancy's asked him multiple times, and Jamie and I have seen emails where she's just frustrated and beyond belief. And Irma's part of the same email group that's asking, why, why, what are we gonna do? And initially it was like thirteen percent, or thirty-seven percent, or something like that, but who picks those? A machine randomly pulls those out and sends them out. So I wish they had a better way to do it, there's gotta be a better way to do it, but.
And I think this kind of a survey is supposed to be done periodically, and we haven't done one for many, many years. Like, it was like ten times longer than it should have been done. I don't know, we are supposed to initiate that or what, but it's something that seemed like was overdue and, yeah, Nancy's been working to get this, and if we, you know, we may qualify for some grants and not others.
So this company writes the grant?
No, they just determine our level.
Who writes the grant for us right now?
That's, but we need some grants.
That's what we're going to next.
That's our next topic.
So is there any more question about the community service, uh, community survey? If not, we'll move on to a bright spot in this process, there's a lot of bright spots, but anyway. Um, possible hiring the grant writer. Economic development leaders Michael and Aaron Phillips. Myself and Mr. Pikes attended a meeting of the Knox County Economic Development Community. And we, we joined as a city, we're part of the economic development for Knox County. They recently hired Five Rule Planning. Five Rule Planning is that, they're, they are their people, they're that group of people, that's what they do, is help cities get resources. That's what they're for. And it started out as a lady that was working for the state of Nebraska, and she was building these massive portfolios for towns and, and was getting paid or whatever, and she handed the portfolio over to the city and then she turned and walked away. And they had this information that she compiled. And she was so, so distraught by all that, because this was her life and that's the town's, you know, heartbeat right there. So she decided to break away from the state of Nebraska, started her own company. She does exactly the same thing she did, does all the statistical data, data analysis of a town. Michael correct me whatever, and then, and then she takes that, she gives this to you. And then, of course, obviously, then she turns around and finds matching grants and resources to go right with it. And they're gonna be here, that company, her name is Bobby, and Lowell is her associate, and they've been doing economic development for many, many, many years. Knox County, through your supervisors, hired them for a six-month trial basis with no additional costs to our city. Right, and I asked her, I asked Bobby, the owner of the company, I said, can we, for this, because we gotta have grants, right? And I don't, you know, I might wit's end about it, she's, no, you can't pay us one extra cent. We've got six months to prove ourselves to Knox County. We're gonna make that work, and we're gonna prove that obviously we're worth our weight in whatever they get paid. And that they're gonna, the Knox County supervisors won't have a choice but to keep us on, and then we'll be able to part of it. They're coming here Monday, a week from today, to, because they need to know our community better. And so their, two of them are coming here, and Larry's gonna drive them around, we're gonna feed them up here at the, and it's on Monday. Fortunately, we don't have Quibas Recreation. But, so Erin has agreed to feed them up here at the second street, the shop on second, she's gonna feed them up there. And then we're gonna have a, a discussion about three primary things, about date, excuse me, childcare, housing, and L B eight forty and where we're going and what we have for resources available. And they wanna question us about those things, and then we're gonna take them, they wanna see, they wanna know what the heartbeat, what Crofton looks like. And Larry's gonna throw them in a van and drive them around for a while, and then they're gonna take off at three o'clock in the morning, so I do the same thing. So I, I think myself personally, and I don't know, Michael was there, I, I think it was the real deal.
But they're, it'll be an asset to the area. You know, it's one of them things where, through the county, it's gonna be limited. You know, there'll be some stuff that they can't, can't do for us, but they'll improve themselves and go from there.
Yeah, I just thought it was a huge step in the right direction with investment. When we, we're part of the Knox County Economic Development, we're doing speed, and so we are contributing a little bit, but nothing additional that we wouldn't already do. And so.
They're gonna go to every one of the towns, Wausau, Creighton, Bluefield, Iberia, Vertigee. And they're gonna look each town over, and they're gonna, they're gonna help each town individually, instead of just putting us in a big pool. They're gonna come across and they're gonna see exactly what we need and what we expect, and goes to another town and do the same thing. So it's a good deal, good deal that we get a one-to-one basis on it.
Yep.
It would be good to have that survey back before they came, you know, because you are talking to them about what people want and the community needs. Too bad it wasn't too.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we went to the meeting and, and the lady pointed out to us clearly, she said, what do you need? And everybody, she said, don't say housing, don't say childcare, because everybody knows that you need childcare. But she said, here's the fundamental things, why, why do you need childcare? Why, why, what's different, what's different about childcare now than it was ten years ago, what's making that different? And what's different about housing, what's making it different? Everybody can want housing, everybody can want childcare, but what is the root cause for those things being the deficits in our community? And I told her, you know, not to insult anybody, but we have three daycare providers, more than that, sorry, but we have three of them, they're all sixty-five years old. That, that would rather be doing something else at this point in time in their life, but they love children and they don't wanna give it up. Right, so she had real data in there that she can say, oh, Crofton's on a destructive path here with their primary daycare people being sixty-five years old and older, and each one of them averaging nine people. So we have real information to help her. Now, what we can do about that, and what she can put that into resources for us, I don't know, but I'm willing to, to do whatever I can to help them out so they can help us out.
And they have grant writers?
They are grant writers.
Okay.
They are, they're planning for our city through grants, yes, yep.
What was her name again? Her name?
Five Rule, Five Rule Planning.
No, the lady's name.
Bobby, don't remember. But if you go Five Rule Planning, it's on there, on the website, it's there, it's there, all about her historical. And she came in boots and jeans, yay. It's fit real good. Anything else? I'm super excited about it, I, I just, I don't wanna be overly excited like Michael, I, I wanna be optimistic, but cautious, because, you know, we have a lot of work to do, but we're making major strides in the right direction, and I believe this is a good step in the right direction.
So they will, they get like, find you a grants to help with that pool and stuff like that?
Yep, yep, yep.
Next through government.
Yep, and, and the way they only can do, they really can do that, Michael, is by gathering information from us. You know, because every town's different, although we need housing and childcare, right? But our needs are different than everybody else's are, and that's why they wanna come here and find out why Crofton is different and what, what they can do with our specific needs grant-wise to help us out. And I did invite Michael, Aaron, Council, Donna, um, Chantel, of course, and, uh, somebody from the childcare, I think Rebecca, from childcare, so those are authorities and, that we have. And I know childcare is working to form a, I'll give this a three oh one four C B K, whatever it is, so they can be a nonprofit organization themselves. I know they're working through the documentation to do it, four oh three C B.
Five oh ones.
One of those numbers like that. So anyways, they're working through that process, and so I wanted Rebecca to be there, so she can obviously represent that group, and hopefully she can be a part of that. Anything else, questions? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is auto pay from the bank for customer payments of utilities provided by the city.
Evening, um, we've had a lot of, a lot of people asking about having auto paid from their accounts for utility billings. And it's probably time to offer that. We could do that very easily through the bank, um, it's for two hundred and forty dollars, the annual fee. And with that, the billing would be the same, Donna would still send out the bills. Everyone would either get, would get their bill, male, female, just like they usually do. And then we would do it, we would schedule the auto withdrawal for the fifth of the month, which would give, if anybody had a, um, something that they need fixed on their bill, we could get that resolved before we did the, did the A C H. Or we'd adjust it following month. People have the option of doing this, they do not have to do this. Try doing this, I think this would eliminate a lot of the cash coming through the office. It could also help reduce the late accounts, and it would also help the collection efforts. Because I think some people just are used to the convenience of paying their bills online, having things auto pay, instead of writing a check. Our next generation, some of them don't even have checks, and I think that would be, I think it's something we could at least try. And I think that would be, I think it's something we could at least try. And, um, it would definitely reduce the amount of time spent in the office doing up deposits and processing. It'd save Donna a lot of time. We can try it, see how it works. If it doesn't work.
Is there a charge to the consumer for that?
There's not. No. It's two hundred and forty dollar annual fee with the bank.
So you can send just the bill email with? You don't have to get it in the mail?
Right.
When did you start offering that? I didn't know that.
Sometimes it works.
Cause I could, yeah, that would be awesome. Yeah.
Yeah, Donna, Donna can.
Send it with the email.
Yeah, Donna can set that up for you. It, it, it works most of the time. Right, Donna?
Sometimes, yeah.
I think we've had a lot of people asking, especially people coming to town, they're wanting to know if they can set something like this up. Paying cash or check is, is kind of a historic way of doing things in this next generation. But I guess we don't need a resolution to do it. We're already set up with banks. The bank has our information because we are doing automatic deposit for the payroll. So we did auto debit for the accounts for the water bills. It would, we don't need a resolution. We just need permission to do that. It would come out on the fifth. If the fifth lands on a holiday or a Saturday or Sunday, it would come out the following bank, banking day. So it would not surprise anybody. So if it falls on a Saturday, it wouldn't surprise you. It wouldn't be done on a Friday. It would be done on following Monday. We just need permission from the council to be able to do that and spend the two hundred and forty dollars this year to start doing that. And we would put up a flyer and a form in all the billing accounts and people could sign up for it. If they wanna wait and sign up for it later, they could do that too. But it would be an option, something to try.
It sounds like it would pay for itself in one year.
Uh, but the product, yeah.
Any questions of Chantel? If not, thank you very much. We appreciate it. I think it's entirely up to you. Just make a motion to give her permission.
I like that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by second. Wait and see. Miller? Pike? Thank you, Chantel. Okay, so the next item will be, uh, my agenda, if I turn over the next page, there's possible wiring and a heater for the auditorium kitchen. In light of the circumstance that evolved, and no fault of anyone in particular, just, you know, that's how life is when things happen. We obviously awarded the golden key to our city to wonder for saving our, our building. There is a heater out there that we can put up in the corner because there's, there's no heat in there. And it, well, even like when we have council meetings, it's sixty degrees, seventy degrees out here, it's nice, nice cold in there. And Dustin can kind of test the fact that how many, to keep it, you gotta keep the cabin doors to keep the pipes from open from freezing in. It's not a good situation. And so we could get a heater and hang it up in the corner, which we have one available, um, for reduced price. And then, uh, we could get bids on getting wired in with thermostat and we could take care of that situation. The heater cost is about one hundred and fifty dollars for a wall hanging heater. And I don't, I don't have estimates. You know, that's entirely up to you if you wanna go forward with this or, or not. Whatever you wanna do.
I'll make a motion to, uh, put some wiring and get a heater for the auditorium kitchen.
So we'll take bids on it and take.
We'll get a motion.
A motion to take bids on it or just go ahead and do it? Take bids on it.
I'll get bids first.
I'll get bids on it or not. That's okay. Motion is made and I'll second it. Pike? Bobbernick?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
First item, old business is water diversion in Omaha Street. Go ahead.
All right. The last meeting, we, Mr. Weiser came and showed us a diagram of, uh, the property on Omaha Street and how they're gonna divert that down past the crypt down there by, uh, you know, end up in a South Park and end up down there past Leon Way, please, and into that. I talked to Mr. Carlson and he was at the meeting and I talked to him after the meeting. And he showed me, if you know where his property is, it's, there's a red gate right to the easiest place. He said, if we took a patrol and a pay roller and just hollowed out a spot of ground, you know, there's a building sitting out there. If you went to the east of that, hollow that out because that's where all the water pools and drain it into that, uh, reservoir tank that, uh, the smokehouse has. He said, you'd be very happy with that. And that water's coming off of Omaha Street and those apartments, all that water ends up down there anyway. But it pools right there by his business and that red gate to the east of these seats. If we went in there, and I talked to Dustin and I think we can just do it ourselves. You know, and maybe have a surveyor kind of check it out to make sure we got smoke through that reservoir tank there, that, that hole in there. Where those little trees are next to there. And there's enough water from way up by Bronz Sewers that'll take it all. And they made it to make it all work. So Mr. Carlson said he'd be very happy if you hollowed out that spot down there by the corner and call it good.
So the existing home, homeowners, existing homes on Omaha Street get the benefit of not having water in your basement?
I'm not saying that. It's a little area, but it's gonna get rid of a lot of water. I'm not saying that we're gonna stop all the water in Omaha.
But it's gonna help dramatically.
It'll help, yeah. You know, we had a big rain here last year, year before. It flooded everything in my backyard across the street. This is, the water can go out someplace without any control. I guarantee you, I'm not gonna have water in there. It's not, it's just gonna happen. I have no control over that.
Can't tile?
It's a, the water can get to the, the culvert, right?
Yes.
Now, and it's, and that's what we wanted, that's what we wanted.
When it goes on Carlson's and it floods the whole thing and it pools up down, you see in back of his place, he's got, he used to keep explosives in that cement building back there. And it starts from there and goes and it floods that whole area down there. And he wanted to get the water out of there. So that's why we're gonna dig a valley in there to get it moving away.
And that's what, that could do with the surface waterway, you know, because it's gonna take seventy percent of his patch out. There's gonna be dry now. Twenty or thirty percent might be affected by the, by the swill we're gonna put in there, but he was happy with it.
He said, he said it would get away.
Right.
So I think Dustin and Mr. Shoemaker with their patrol and his payroll, I think we can do it ourselves. I think Dennis and Dustin's expertise on those machines, I think we can make it work.
We need a motion. I can do that.
I'll motion to, uh, fix up Mr. Carlson's corner there for the drainage of the water coming off of Omaha Street and above that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Bobbernick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And Pike?
Yes.
Okay. The next item of business is recycling box. And do we have any further, uh, votes on there or whatever?
Nope. I did have someone contacting me about somebody getting a premium for cardboard. Can you sell cardboard? If we have like a cardboard only bin?
I know at one time it was a profit deal, but I don't know. It's been a while since it was a profit in selling cardboard. I don't know.
So that might be an option. I don't know if anybody buys cardboard or like a recycling place. Waste management? Okay, let me see.
We can definitely continue to look into it and see if there are some other options and then we can talk about it again next week.
Maybe if it was just cardboard, it was just all recyclables, I don't know if that would be more marketable where maybe we could sell the cardboard or they would take it and not charge us. That might be an option.
The results of survey were overwhelming that the citizens are probably don't want to pay an extra dollar to keep that recycled. All right. So we'll check in, how, make an effort to check in and see if there's a way to recycle that cardboard. Okay, um, committee reports, finding and zoning. Was there a meeting there the other night?
Finding and zoning?
Okay, uh, economic. Oh, good, yeah.
Donna was able to be there, so I'll speak. There were a couple of comments about the area around the elevator and C H S's property regarding the benefit of the, uh, redistrict into industrial rather than commercial. And that's being considered strongly. Appreciate any input from others about tax concerns as well as, uh, any other concerns that were really addressed. That, that was the primary concern. And, uh, that's been taken under advisement. We'll continue to work with that. I really appreciate the cooperation from the community and your input. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael, do you have anything you'd like to add in behalf of the economic development?
Me?
Think we're just gonna wait until after we meet with them next Monday and then try to get the committee together. Proceed from there. That should give us a little bit more of guidance in which direction to take economic development.
And we did, uh, I think we overwhelmed Knox County there. We were, I think we were the only town in Knox County that brought four representatives that were concerned, invested in, in moving forward in the process. And so they're happy with us and our commitment that we have. And I applaud Michael and Erin for taking the time and effort to, to show up down there speaks volumes to their equipment, to, uh, commitment to move forward. Thank you very much, Michael. Okay, moving on to administrative reports, we have Donna.
Um, good news is I got you all into the cornhusker for the conference. I moved you out of, uh, the courtyard area into that. They, uh, had cancellation. So everybody got a room there. So you're good to go there. Um, the sales tax will be taking place, uh, April first. Uh, we just let people know that it is so that they start fixing their cash registers and be prepared for the half set. Um, if the state takes care of everything, we just kinda let people know and remind them. Um, I did, uh, have keys made for the rental because I'd like you to start picking up your packets. And I gave you keys for the outside door. They'll be inside in the vestibule. You won't have keys to come into the office, but just in there, maybe you can pick them up at your leisure when you get time to. So that I'm not going up and down everybody's steps and sidewalks and stuff, so. Also, uh, we have one bid that's come in so far for the property. It's a sealed bid. And we will be opening them on, uh, the next meeting, which I believe is the, uh, twelfth of, uh, March. So you still have time to get in bids if you're going to bid, um, any of the properties. Also, I got a letter from, uh, Cedar Knox. They are no longer gonna charge us rent on our light poles. We'll still pay for light, of course, but they're not because they're not gonna do wooden poles anymore. They're, all the poles that they placed now are going to be metal. If you want a decorative metal pole, you're gonna have to pay for it. And if you want special lights, you'll have to pay for that too. But we are gonna save a little bit of money and Chantel and I won't know what until we see the bills. But we are not gonna pay light on, or rent on the poles anymore. So, uh, pretty much that's it. Things are going on. It actually was able, uh, Dustin was able to read the meters this, this month. So the meter readings are on the bills and I actually, I got them all in today. Be printing them tomorrow and getting them up hopefully before the week is over. So, uh, and I did want to tell you, I did send you information on this, uh, epic, uh, the, the tax that they're thinking about doing away with. And it was just for your information. It actually came from a very established, uh, clerk, city clerk, who's been clerk for over thirty years. And she just wanted the, the information out. She doesn't have a, a preference or, uh, she just wanted you guys to have it. You should be aware of it. So I sent that all to you. You can get it online. Anybody else who's interested, it's what Nebraska's thinking about doing and changing, uh, the taxes here. Property taxes and some other things. And you could go online and find it. It's called Epic. And, and you can just get it under nebraska.gov if you're interested in reading what it is and, and then I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Dustin, anything for the.
Just one thing. Uh, down in the area of East Second and Omaha Street, which would be backed up by Kurt Stephens, Diana Allen's. Uh, we're having a lot of sewer issues there, uh, because some years past, the, however, the sewer was routed. It wasn't done by the city, but we need to figure something out in order to get it straightened out so that we know who's, who's and what's what. Cause Alex and I have been spending a lot of time up there unclogging things lately. I'm still trying to come up with options, I guess, as far as what we should do there. But, um, just so you guys know, I guess that's gonna be coming up.
So how big is that city sewer line, Diane, or what is that?
Well, the, the line coming up the alley right now, I believe is only four inches.
That's all?
Yes.
What is a normal city sewer line that everybody connects to? What's that?
Typically six to eight, not eight, right?
So is there, is there possibilities that we could connect where it goes from our city down to a four inch? We can put a bigger tube in there, connect these other people?
Well, that's what I'd like to do. And tie each one on individually instead of having.
So how many feet roughly do you think that we'd have to put our, extending of our city sewer line?
Right now it extends up probably a half a block. I'd like to go a little farther than that, I guess, feet wise, I guess.
Are we going across, we gotta go across and see some residential property there to put that in there?
Well, it's, it's, I guess, considered alley right now where it's happening. So we are probably gonna have to tear a little ways into some people's yard. It's gonna have to be a little bit more fixer, I think.
So it's, it's doable to extend the city pipe?
Yeah.
You know that, Larry, do you know that, where, where we're talking about down there? Is there, you know, what, I'm just asking Alex, you're an expert at this too. So what, if you add on to a city line, how, how would you say, how wide, how diameter it works? Thirty-six or? Can, do they make a pipe that could connect that, Alex, to connect to the sewer and make it just enough so we don't have that problem again to go to a four inch?
It's all four inch.
Is that?
It's all four inch. Right now it's all four inch.
It is?
Yes.
But are they connected all this way or they gotta make some line and everybody going into it?
Right now, all of it is four inch. So there's really no main there?
No. There's no main there. Could we get that pipe bigger so we could have left room for all those? We're talking about three families that are covering it, right? Right in that corner down there?
Yeah.
Would they join all on central location or just all over?
They, they pretty well all meet in one.
Okay.
One area.
So we just need to get a bigger main at that point?
Yes. That's what I would say. Like I said, I'm still trying to come up with what's the best option. When I do, I guess it.
Thank you. Any other questions, Dustin?
We have, uh, a new, uh, city code and porter, David Benak, who is here with us and will share some information.
I've been spending some time in the office, trying to learn the codes. There's a lot of them. I'm sure everybody's familiar with the house on Main Street. We were in Morton last year. I, the problem with that one is the owner is dead. That is deceased. And the daughter's been paying the taxes on it for years. And she said that she's, uh, with, uh, working with attorney, trying to get owner to go to the house. And once she does that, she's gonna sell the property. I told her, I'm afraid she has to do something with it, but, but that, either that or we would just. And, and there's another one behind the, uh. And, and there's another one behind the, uh, uh.
Highway twelve? Highway twelve and Third Street?
Yes, and very dilapidated. I talked to the owner today, he wasn't real cooperative. I told him I would give him the end of March to come up with a plan, how he's gonna fix the problem. I just don't think he's gonna do it. And I was in the office the other day and we had a complaint on, come in on the website, of garbage blowing out on the neighbor's property. So, I immediately contacted the person and they took care of the problem. And I contacted the client today and they were very happy that it was taken care of so fast. And we have a problem with the dog loose, we've had several, several complaints on it. Sooner or later I'm gonna have to figure it out. And I don't know what to do with the dog loose to pick it up.
We used to have a kennel up by the city yard.
Do we have a kennel?
Well, yeah, yeah, we, we had one when the cattle was on, on the street. Yeah, a kennel up by the, the city yard someplace. It's gone.
Have you notified the owner?
Yes, we said, said hello there, uh, there's the, the owner, but she's been contacted several times before, but it's a dog.
I think I'll keep track of that when you contact her.
I bet, I bet, I don't know, I'm bad at that, and how she's contacted. And I know it's gonna, the dog's gonna be running loose again, it's gonna be. And I know she's been contacted several, several times.
Is there a number of dogs that have been in the household?
And she's got, just one dog.
That's what it's called?
Yes, and I saw a limit on how many dogs.
Yeah, you could have three, I believe.
Three?
In the house.
Yes.
Do you think the dogs are going to be in the society?
I don't know. I'm just wondering what I'm gonna do with the dogs, I have to figure it out. I know it's gonna happen.
It's paying at home for fun, you're not, you're?
No.
How many dogs do you have? Do you have three yet?
I think we could, well, one works before, it's about veterinary diseases. Because we picked up a lot of dogs that was there that were running. And he had, that's what it was. And so, after a certain point, that then it comes at us.
Ron, don't they just have a dog, so, and nature?
It's a veterinary.
Can we take that turn off?
Neither one of our pets, I don't think, Jeremy doesn't want small animals as far as, when I had issues with.
The one by Truckee's, they mess with.
He didn't want them.
What?
But, well, Lambers doesn't want.
I can't, I have no idea, I think I'd be in Congress.
Ron, Ron took a picture of the dog there. She put the picture up and she didn't want the dog.
Yeah.
You can call Ron, don't worry, that's the way, I am, she doesn't really have a place for.
Okay, my, my goal with this job is to work with the people, period, not to write tickets and not take up the court in any way the city can help them. And I hope that you agree with me.
And I, I'm too, I know, the code, code book is probably antiquated. I mean, you're a professional, so I trust your judgment on there. If there's things in there you'd like us to reconsider, modify or adjust. To me, things as should be in relationship, are there, please don't hesitate, let us know. Because if the cords are, codes are, you can't enforce, they're, they're worthless. So if there's some things in there we can modify to make your job easier and better for you to do, then please let us know. So we can help you out.
And that's it?
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that job, David.
I have a question.
Yep.
Is he gonna take care of all the junk cars too?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'll make you lose.
I would have to run in thirteen.
We're gonna need, we're gonna need to make a tow lot for this one. Michael, got room for all those?
So as far as the enforcer, I just kind of stumbled upon it and then I did look into it in the paper. But as far as the general public knowing as far as what's gonna be enforced, I mean, I just heard something about three dogs in the house and I would have never known there was a limit, not that we have a dog, but, I mean, I'm sure there's several people that have more than that in their home, but we never know that that's against the city ordinance.
Okay.
Is there somewhere where people can look at the city ordinance and know so that, you know, before they get a slap on the hand or enforcer coming knocking on their door that, oh, I didn't realize that was?
I do not know if our codes are listed on our city website or not.
No, but I do have, I've been putting things on the webpage for people to look. And right at the top of it, it says that your, every dog needs to have a license by January. So if they come in and try to get four or five of them, I'll be able to tell them that they can only have three dogs in the city. But other, you know, some people just need to call and find out if, how many they can have. And there's a binders of the ordinances in the city offices.
Always available to look through.
And a table and chair so you can sit there and read. A whole binder.
But it would be nice to get them electronic on the post on our website and help.
Well, it's different ideas of what is suitable and what's not, yeah.
What are the bananas puppies?
I think that, that's an issue, obviously, but that's only a temporary.
Yes.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Don? Will we want to, oh, yeah, there, that's me. Bob, I ran across something to help us. Um, there's a magic mystical, you know, of course, obviously you've all seen on Facebook where it's, it's now, uh, the season is open for potholes, right? And there's people that fish in potholes and there's stuff on Facebook, you know, pothole golf or whatever happened to be the case. But on a serious side of that, we, there's a, a trailer that we can rent that is a pothole fixing machine. It, it adds, has a gravity feed where you get three eighths inch crushed red rock. It, it applies, this trailer has a, a liquid container, which we already have the liquid oil in a barrel. We could, a big barrel, right? Yeah, yeah, a big barrel, that stuff. We can apply the liquid oil and put the, the red rock in there and, and then seal it with some more of this magical stuff. And you pull this trailer, um, it's kind of expensive, but we can rent it. We can rent the trailer. And if we rent it for, I don't know, a month or whatever we need to do, we can do with extra help, which we'll have to get. We can, we could do the majority of the potholes in town. I don't know when the perfect day is because, you know, if we rent it today, we might have a blizzard and never get to do it, um, you know. But anyway, it's an option for not very much money. Well, in comparison to the full cost of the machine, we can rent this, we, we can get the red rock, it's really available. Can we deliver it here relatively inexpensively and we already have the oil. And we'd need a little extra manpower because Dustin already has enough to do. But we could run this machine and fill the potholes and hopefully in the rented time they have a month, we could do the majority if not all of town. And the testing of it is that, um, when we asked the company that has this rental, they did it with this specific machine on the interstate on Blacktop and it lasted better than the rest of the Blacktop area. So, it's, it's a pretty good patch, it's a pretty good fill and operation.
There's, there's a heater and I just don't want, it's a heater on this machine and if you can choke on it or pitch it or anything. It's, it's a heater on there that heats up the oil and combines the rock. And you gotta blow out the hole first with a compressor and I think Jerry Stephens got a big enough one to blow all the residue out of the hole. And one guy's mowing the lawn and the other guy's driving the truck. And one, you know, and you just spray it in that hole and it powers it in there. And the traffic that we have will pack this stuff down. And like Bob said, this guy did on Interstate eighty, they're in Lincoln, they're all over. He's got, he's got the, the thing that we're looking for in filling potholes. And we can go down the street and do all of them, it's, it's a lawn and just go out and you just put it out there and it drops it right into the hole. So, I mean, I, I, I'm real positive it, I ran across it, showed it to Bob. We don't know what the cost of three eighths inch crush rock is, we got the oil. And we rented one machine for a month and I think if we have four guys, I think we could do ninety percent of our town in one month. Be done. And if we have four problems, we can probably rent it again and do it that way. That beats the F out of dumping a bag down there and trying to pack it in there. This one works better.
Which, you know, obviously, we, I don't remember how many bags, Dustin, that we bought, purchased or whatever for pothole mix. I mean, just fill in the hole and pack it down or whatever, but we did extensive amounts. I know it doesn't look like it right now, but we put a lot of those bags out there and we have two pallets of those bags. Now, that we're doing, we'll do everything humanly possible to, to get those taken care of, especially, you know, ones at intersections where it's dangerous and you might lose parts of your car or whatever. So, please don't hesitate or without reservation, give me a call and say, hey, you know, I know you don't get down my street, Bob, but this is a bad spot. Or let Donna know and we'll do everything we can to accommodate those. Because we do have patch and we can't get it done temporarily, but this would give us an opportunity to hopefully get a handle on it. And, and right, you're right, potholes are just gonna develop and develop and develop and develop. And if we rent this for a month, note, I can't tell you that the next month there won't be more potholes. But we can get the majority of them and give them taken care of.
Three quarter inch red rock is thirty-five dollars a ton.
This, yeah, thirty-five dollars.
Thirty-five a ton? I got in contact with Mr. Todd Tany, he's gonna give you the price for bringing it up by, someplace at Spencer, they bring it down.
Yeah, that's.
And, and he'll bring it down here and he says if we got too much, he'll take the rest of it and use it some other place. And the oil, you know, Dustin said we had enough oil, so it's just a matter of renting the machine and buying the, the red rock. And we could just go down, let's just use Iowa Street from one twenty-one and go straight east and get all the potholes all the way and then go on another road and go all the way down until we get all the potholes. And all it does, we gotta have a guy that runs the CDL because he's gotta take that dump truck because the gravel fits in there. And there's a hose that goes in that rock and it sucks it down into this machine. And it's some magic that does it, it's got a burner on it and everything.
Could you fix like down here by the park or where the fire department parks on the side where the asphalt's all crumbly?
Well, he did, the guy that I talked to, he told me it does not do very good, but it's only got like this. But he's talking, you know, potholes like we got, but stuff that where the asphalt, the ground is real close, but it's still a kind of a dip. You'll have to probably dig that out and then do it that way. But he said the real thin stuff, you gotta make a hole and put this stuff down and it'll hold in there. He puts a tack wheel.
Great idea.
Pardon?
I think it sounds like a great idea.
Well, it's something I ran across and, and Mr. Evans and I are gonna, we're gonna go into that legal utilities and he told us to stop by, it's in Lincoln. So, we're gonna stop by and he's gonna demonstrate it to us and, and then I thought maybe in March we'll talk about it and make a decision. Because April's probably the month that we wanna do it in.
Should we put it on the agenda for next month?
It's gotta be forty degrees or hotter season, so right now ain't the perfect time because you gotta be a consistent forty degrees, so.
Sounds great. And I love how you said summer.
That would make a lot of people happy in this town, I know it will, so.
Alright. If it takes two months or whatever it takes with manpower, it takes two months.
But they don't like the sub machines instead of just renting them, so.
Oh, and that is the other, if we rent it for two months and we figured we couldn't be without it, or maybe we could sublet it, whatever we pay in rent, they'll take off of our tolls.
So if we pay, it's like six thousand dollars a month, so.
I think we should try to go for just one month, but maybe have, have people lined up that can help and.
Well, yeah.
Ready to go when it gets.
Yeah, you gotta have, Mr. Stephens over here's got that big, big compressor, I think it's his boy, I don't know if it's Jerry's or his boy. But I think we can rent that from him and blow out and have a high pressure get all of that grumply in the hole.
Sounds great.
Well, I hold it worth it.
Any else?
Close session?
Any, next, next March eleventh, right?
Do we want to, do we need to go in closes and discuss land disbursement at this point? Well, we did have and I forgot, sorry, we had a bid and that was from existed before on one of the police cruisers.
We can't talk about that today?
It's in there. My report is that I do have one and so I don't know if it's, it's, I'm gonna tell you the name, but it's ten thousand dollars for the police cruiser without any radio equipment and that's way below its marketable value with a person that. Kenson knows it, of course, obviously, it's a police cruiser and they're gonna have to do modifications to it, just like the one we was taking over to. Uh, Naver, I had modifications, maybe we had to pay for those modifications, so it, so I don't know, it's up to you.
What year is the, which one is it?
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty, right?
The twenty twenty Durango?
Fifty-five, fifty-five thousand.
And you got an offer for ten thousand dollars?
Well, I'm not, in your case, yes, I'm just, to replace it, we'd never be able to replace it for that. And plus, I will pay tax insurance, but, you know, hopefully, you know, we get a personal officer and switch back between the two of them. That's your council decision, I'll.
If anybody in town wants a Durango for more than ten thousand dollars, you make it a hundred.
Yeah, then you pay ten thousand, one.
Cool, okay, but anyways, if there's not anything else, we're not gonna go into closed session. So then, once again, I'd like to thank the building for being here, courtesy of Wanda, keeping our building in the condition that it is. Thank her for that and, I think there's extra cake left, if somebody needs to grab a piece of cake, please indulge yourself over there. Thank you very much for coming and greatly appreciate, um, the cooperation from every person in the city. And I, I'm really happy with the direction we're headed. I think we're doing it. Thank you. Yeah, we need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, cool, thank you, motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's been rejected, over there?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.